Good, happy Monday, everybody.
I'm calling. I I didn't know there was a meeting today.
Oh, yeah, eleven o'clock.
Okay.
Well, I think so.
It's and it's not, it's a special meeting only, so they're gonna do a um briefing of the for the new members of what's going on.
Okay, cool.
Okay, so Amanda then.
I- is there an agenda?
There is.
I'm just gonna run down search and look at it real quick.
It's right there.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Use Toms.
Thank you.
Um, so you're.
How you doing, Tom? Sorry.
Good. Have you done this one?
Yeah.
I did last week, so I have not a chance.
That's.
That's where it's in there.
I was this morning.
That's right.
Nice.
Yes.
I did twenty-three hundred yards.
Nice, yeah, that's really good.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know if I've ever done that many, actually. I al- almost always just go and do a mile.
So work session from my eyes program.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Line the thing is broke, so it just falls over.
Cool. I do whenever you operate out the uh Pichara thing, I would love to.
That's even better than that.
It's a good, it's a good job.
That would be on Wednesday.
Okay.
What what are you doing?
Wednesday and Monday.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you.
And I did print that packet out for us while.
Was that?
I did print that packet out when you said.
Okay, cool, that's great.
And a couple of people.
Awesome, and then uh I I have some updates with you on some year old stuff, so whenever, whenever you're done.
Okay, alright.
Good job.
Bad.
Oh.
You wanna get him on his, cause I don't have that one, uh Marty?
I'm sorry?
You wanna turn, show him how to use his? I don't mind, it's not like that.
Oh, okay, so we're gonna go to Tom.
I got the empty. Mm-hmm. How you doing, Amanda?
Yeah, that you will drive out, yeah, try to go.
Good work, guys.
Oh, God.
Fresh, last week had me, last week was a nightmare.
Oh, that's the same as mine.
Town, so it's. And sick, and my waitress was gone, so I got us was covering.
Never has, now there's nothing on it yet, because I'm looking at setting it seven.
Everything, yeah.
And so I was exhausted, I was in bed by eight thirty.
A quality new tablets?
Really?
Eight thirty, I'm twenty-seven.
So this is not, but I was, but this has got all your packets, more packets and everything, it's on it.
But I uh, I never got to work out, I never had to do nothing.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Now.
Oh, me either, and that's why I was just, and I felt terrible, you know, I feel so out of my, out of my person and out of it, out of wax, so.
Then, the stuff in my head.
Oh, I. Uh, yeah. Yeah. I go over to Ratto and swim in their, in their whole, like, last summer.
Totally.
Yeah.
We have a great watch.
Oh, I think so.
It's horrible.
Alright.
The whirlpool, I know, I did so far, that's a great time.
Wow.
Did you just give you this this morning? Oh, okay. So, cause I had these two.
Right, so that's why I've I've told you in the email that you will have complete packets at your seats, so I'll, I've been printing all, excuse me.
The only thing I wanted you to get, Marty.
So I've been printing all the board packets, so that you have them all at your seats, because there's been some issues with tablets.
So then, these are like, uh, this is chapter eight. And chapter seven is there?
They're all in, they're all against, I say.
And then once, it's it's only two awards taken out of there, is that what it is?
Right, that are that are specific related to tourism.
Fine, boy.
So the whole municipal code that we found out there is online.
Gross.
Alright, so, so as I look at this, chapter eight, and I wanna know what manual it came out of.
Municipal code, in course of, code of awareness.
Okay, so that's.
Those are all documents that you can find online under city of Trinidad dot com, or col- Trinidad, Colorado dot com.
Okay, and so then of the twenty-twenty budget, when we get to page ninety-six, that's because this is out of this municipal budget.
Right.
And I'm all, see, I'm just trying to reference what's going on.
Right, that's in the, that comes out of the budget handbook, and that's, there's three pages in the budget handbook that are related to tourism, and those are the three.
Okay. Okay, and where's this one coming from?
This one actually was in, that is a presentation that the board did to city council, um, and.
You do that one?
We do that at the end of the year.
Well, I think really good about for a couple of months.
That's a good enough.
I might say.
It's okay. Alright, so that's that one. Um, I understand what's going on there, I understand what's going on.
They kept that in order, so if something come out, we'll take that page, and we will explain all of that as we go through the meeting.
Yeah.
It's.
Uh, like I do. I'm not taking notes, right?
I can't, I didn't think of that, okay.
That's alright, you don't matter, I'll work with it, it's so much, it just becomes second heat.
So.
I'm taking notes.
This, uh, aside, because it was not even.
Water.
But it's not the end in the package, right?
Alright, alright.
Right?
Yep.
So when I put your pack together and put it in front of you, it is in order of how we will proceed through the meeting.
Morning, Camilla.
Got it.
Good morning.
I'm going to get some when I come back, so I will go get some.
Morning, Camilla.
Good morning.
Hello, hello?
Good morning, good morning.
Morning, welcome, everyone. I have some fun stuff for you that I was gonna pass on your way, I was finding some of the old marketing things that happened for the city.
Oh, awesome.
And I thought I'd pass them on your way, and the plans over, but it has worked, what has it?
What were you thinking that story about?
Oh, I thought it was fabulous, I thought it was fabulous.
I didn't say that story, I didn't bring my phone.
I thought it was, you're exactly right, that's exactly what we need.
It is. This kid, he he ca- he contacted me last night, he wants to, he wants to know if he could help us in any way.
Yeah. Yeah, awesome.
Shirley Doherty's son?
Well.
He did a, he's paraplegic, he did a, uh, he did a story on a, on a black cowboy.
Right. Which is. I care for you.
Is your heart?
Road side of a trail.
No, no, no. That's the funny, the second one, I wasn't aware of.
Oh, they're right here.
There you go.
And what story, he's in the, uh, Oklahoma Cowboy Hall of Fame.
That's a great story.
Cool.
Did you post something like that on there or something? Okay, I saw something, I didn't read it, because me and Facebook haven't been looking at each other a little bit here lately.
Yeah, read it. You gotta read that, it's really cool.
Alright.
Yeah, it's great.
But, but anyway, he was a, he's a Doherty, and nailed a million acres at one time.
Hmm.
And nailed the wholesome, uh, county store.
Which has been so long since I've held another wholesome, I bet it's been ten or fifteen years.
Yeah. And his great, I mean, probably be his great great grandfather was the doctor in wholesome.
That's truly, that's a wonderful one.
Yeah.
I, when is the next meeting for that?
Uh, March, uh, when is it, Marty, March, uh, eighth?
What?
The next, uh, Santa Fe Trail meeting.
Second, I believe, it's the first Monday in March.
And it's at the Mitchell.
Before we're gonna know it's here. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Camilla?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Amanda?
Here.
Myself, Scott?
Here.
Okay, so, welcome and congratulations for being on the tourism board, and we're just gonna have continuous fun.
Welcome.
Yay.
Good luck.
And are you guys both on for two years or three years, I missed out on that.
One year, two year, or three years, do you know?
I don't. Is it a, that's an appointment, they stack her up, so that like, the whole board doesn't change at the same time?
Is it, is it one year, a future or something? It's a, it's a year the first time it's.
I don't, it wasn't mentioned at the, at the council meeting?
No, 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 I said the, said the council's discretion, actually, on who, how they said those, but I didn't get the minutes, I'll get the minutes from that meeting.
It's, it depends on who's.
Oh.
Yeah, just, there's a wonder.
Yeah.
Okay, so, this is really just a work session for us to get to know each other and for you to know your duties and responsibilities as by being on the board. Have you had time to, um, look over the full packet that you received? Let's, let's look at.
The email, yes.
Okay, so let's kind of review it toge- to- together, um, first, uh, I I don't know if there's anything, any questions that you wanna.
Is there any questions?
Yeah, after reviewing all the stuff, are there any questions that you have, was it overwhelming, was there anything that surprised you?
No. Not, well, there was plenty that surprised me, but I think, I probably feel better to go a little while before I get into any questions. I don't have any showstoppers, something like that, so, um, I just wanna get perspective on things.
Okay. Okay. Mm-hmm.
The stand back from the trees kinda thing.
Yeah, so probably the biggest thing is, uh, the overall picture, is that the tourism board runs from an initiative that went through the city and has been running since two thousand and two, and it is funded solely by overnight stays in Trinidad. So, the mission that was passed by the voters is that when we spend money, although we don't always do this, cause we think about how good it is for the city, citizens of Trinidad, we're always supposed to remember that we're bringing events to Trinidad that will spend money, not just at hotels. Because eh, for every hundred dollars that's spent at a hotel, this board makes three bucks. To understand how important it is, and if nobody stays at any hotels and we do tons of events, we won't have that much money the next year. So we're trying to get people to come here, or just to come here and shop downtown, stay a night, shop downtown. So, our, our goal here is to make Trinidad the hip and cool place, and want people to come here, drop off their money and leave. We just want them to drop off everything on their credit cards, and what's in their pockets, and leave. Um, and that's really, that's really our goal here, so that we have money to, number one reason, jobs. People come here and stay at hotels and restaurants, which is the largest employer in the city, and people forget that. If you take all the hotels in town, the six hundred and some rooms, and all the mom and pops and everything else, and you take all the restaurants, there's like seven, eight hundred employees, which is the largest employer in the city of Trinidad. So what we try to do is go ahead and do that, so that we can create more jobs for the city. And not have, and not have a good section of our young people, especially when they're going to college, or just from twenty to thirty, looking to stay in town, but they can't find a decent job, because there's no supervisors or managers jobs, even that, because there's not enough businesses. So, that's what we're trying to incur, obviously, from my perspective, I would love this to be an entrepreneur town, and our downtown area look like Breckenridge or Prestonview, where there's just a bunch of mom and pop restaurants, and things to do, and museums, you know, and so all those mom and pops still need to employ two to ten, twelve, fifteen people to just keep, so we're building a community, we're building a way of life on our trip here on planet Earth. We're just trying to make it a little bit nicer, and make, make sure that our influence is good for, not just for tourism, but for the city, cause we're mentors to the high schoolers and little kids, and for people that are new in the community, and that's just really our goal, is to try to figure out how we divvy up that money based on our rules and regulations that we have to follow, to get the best bang for our bar, and that we can speak to it out there in the public, cause now you guys are on the tourism board, so you'll find out what it's like when somebody comes to you and says, why did you fund this, why didn't you fund that? What rules and regulations did you go by, is it just because of the good old boys' club? And I really have to say, I really feel like, out of eighteen years on this, being on this board, I've probably been on it fourteen or fifteen years, every board has the best intention for Trinidad. There hasn't been any board, even though maybe, you know, you you look at it, you say they could do this or do that, there hasn't been one board that hasn't tried to do something better, and that's just what we're doing.
One of the things about the tourism board, like she says, there's six hundred and fifty booths. Uh, the Blues probably is the only event that probably books all six hundred and fifty booths.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So that's, that's like a big payday for that, for that weekend, and what we want to do is, we wanna try to encourage people to develop events
Yeah.
And spend some.
that are, that are gonna build our money to give the money.
Uh-huh.
That's, that's the main goal. The one thing about the summer is probably the biggest for these motels, this summer.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's where our, probably our biggest part of our budget comes from, is from the summertime.
Yeah.
You know, and then, um, winter, it it drops off, but.
March is a good one, versus spring break.
March, good, spring break, Texas is one of the spring breaks, and Colorado.
Colorado is that halfway point where people stop.
Actually, fe- February like twenty-fifth through March, or depending on if Easter is in March or in April, cause the parochial schools don't take their spring breaks right into Easter week, but Texas is, is split up into four weeks, so that the whole state of Texas doesn't get on the road and move to Colorado, so they've split it up into four separate weeks.
And you could tell by the downtown traffic that spring break has arrived.
Four exit eleven.
And in the restaurant, oh yeah.
And the restaurant, yes.
Or, or exit eleven.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That gas station.
Yeah, so we just wanna get them, our goal is to pull, pull them off the highway and get them down, downtown, to eat, drink, be merry, and be proud of our town, have them spend money at the downtown shops, you know, and so another thing to think about is, we want to encourage tourism and businesses in the downtown area that Amazon can't reach, right? Cause Amazon can't reach selling Trinidad. Amica- Amicon- Amazon may be able to sell you tops and bottoms and all the stuff that you want, but they can't sell you cool, cool places to walk downtown and buy feedery, or buy the local stuff, or buy local art, or buy a pet store. Or things that we need downtown is things that you can't get on Amazon, we want people to come here, just enjoy it.
We did a pilot program in the month of what, December?
Over the trolley?
No, trolley, was it?
November.
November. To get, pick up people from the motels, exit eleven, and bring them downtown to Trinidad. We have several different shop off places to drop people off for the eateries, the restaurants, and then pick them up and bring them home, so they could drink and not have to drive. We would like to continue that, uh, with our trolley, because you see it in other cities.
Yeah.
It did seem like initially your pilot program worked alright.
I think so.
I mean, it was a spur of, uh, a spur of, what did we have, about a hundred altogether, or that they picked up?
It was a spur of a moment.
A little bit more than that.
It was a little bit more, it was a spur of a moment, if you're down on weekends or.
Yeah, and, and we just tried it on the weekends, never had been tried here before at all.
Yes.
And mainly the eateries, that's what we were, we're trying to, to hit, was the, the mainstream eateries.
Yeah, they do this at night, and, and we wanted to, to get, to get, bring people in downtown to have a, a ride, uh, be able to have a ride, so they can, cause once they're even, people with motor homes or pulling something, they don't have a way downtown.
That's another advantage of that.
Or the people that come in the train.
Another advantage of that too is you can come downtown and eat and drink, and then it will pick you back up, and you don't have to worry about getting in your car.
Mm-hmm.
Which is a concern for a hotel guest, right?
Right.
Um, so, the, and the, and the only way we're, we're supposed to be spending our money that we receive from lodging taxes is for, um, two ways. One of them is for information centers, so an information center is the welcome center, and an information center is the trolley, and an information center would be a kiosk, and the only other way we spend money is advertising and promotion. So if somebody comes to us and they want us to fund their, um.
Event.
Their events, we can only fund the advertising and promotional part of it, we can't fund any other part about that, like, um, we can't fund.
We can't, we can't bankroll them.
Yeah, we can't, so they can't say it costs us thirty thousand dollars, the only time that that is an exception to the rule
We, we can't.
is we ha- we always earmark money for, or we have tried to earmark, earmark money for new events. So if we earmark that we're gonna get ten thousand dollars, because we want this new event about rainbows up and down Main Street, then we can fund that, we wanna hear the whole rainbow program, we wanna see how that happens.
But we also wanted to see how they're bringing people to Trinidad.
We only funded one of those ten thousand dollar grants, and that went to, uh, what's, what was the name of that, uh?
The comedy, the comedy, or Michael comedy.
The comedy.
We gave, and, and, we just implemented this, this ten thousand grant, and we have one recipient of it.
Yeah. And.
Yeah.
Yeah, and whether, you know, and you don't see.
It was, and, and it was the beginning, if, if, and what we wanted to do is continue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was the Southwest Chief?
Yeah.
Right, okay, well, we would want, we would like it to come back and just keep building it, but they can't come and ask for the ten thousand dollar grant again. But they can get on for, for a grant application.
Mm-hmm.
Say they had a five thousand dollar grant application for advertising, then we could, we could, we could give them that, if they came up with that.
And.
Or, or whatever, whatever they got.
We can match it, we could say, send us your bills, that's what generally, send a lot of.
Well, what, what we wanna see out of the result of us giving a grant to an organization like that is heads in beds. We, we want to fill up motels, and so we can continue giving money.
Eh, right, and so is it, is it spinoff to that, the, the tourism board years ago, I, I don't know how many years ago it was now, five, six, seven years ago, maybe even eight, gosh, I have to think about that, uh, we funded thirty thousand dollars a year for three years to start Artokade. And now, we fund Artokade a certain set amount of money a month, six hundred dollars or something towards advertising or something like that.
Six fifty?
Six fifty, yeah, and we do that with the Mitchell, but we never start with the Mitchell, you know what I mean?
I did, I did.
But we did, yeah, so, so we, we're, that's what we're into, we're, we're into, we wish we had, you know, a lot of other people who did it, uh, you know, Blues Fest is a big, is a big thing for Trinidad, um, we did, and, uh, you know, the difference of the ADR rate in Trinidad is the number one time it spikes in the city of Trinidad is when, um, Blues Fest, and that's the average daily rate. So if all the, all the mom and dads and all the hotels and all the rooms in town average a hundred dollars a night during the Blues Fest, they average like a hundred and sixty dollars a night, so if you take sixty dollars times, you know, six hundred and fifty rooms times, so we become, during Blues Fest weekend, we are Wal- uh, Walsenberg and Rotones and everybody's friend, because everybody else always sells out during that period of time too, and that's what our goal is, we would love that. And another background information, cause there's been years I've said on the board that people never wanted to give any money out on grants, which was painful for me, because at the root of tourism, every tourism board should help inspire events to happen in Trinidad. Um, to give you an idea, I know it's Vale, was it, where did we go, Vale or, we went to Vale for the one?
Yes.
Yeah, Vale.
That was two years ago.
So Vale sponsors something like two hundred and fifty events, sixty-seven of them are world-class events, and I know it's Vale. But we want a little of that kinda stuff, where people know, you go to Vale for the weekend, what's going on there. A lot of times people go there, they don't even go to the event, cause now it's so well advertised, they go to the hip bars and they go just hanging out, and there's no reason why Trinidad shouldn't be that way, we have hip bars, they got stuff going on all the time, we have things to do, we're just trying to build on that.
And during the Blues Fest, eh, through the years, it has built up, now they come on Thursday, they don't leave until Monday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's what, that's, that's huge for us, cause they're, our motels are being filled up during the summer, there's no doubt about that,
Yeah, yeah.
but these people are coming now on Thursday, so they could go Friday night, and they don't leave until Monday, we got people coming in the train, same thing, Thursday night, don't leave until Monday.
And that's why, that's why the Artokade is always in September, cause that was one of our things. We are so busy in Trinidad, you're not helping anybody to create an event beyond the first week in June, anytime to the first week in September. That's not helping anybody, we're already busy, hotels are already, if anything, you just frustrate people, cause they can't find a place to stay.
Right.
One of the things that, uh, is happening now is the Santa Fe Trail, they're doing their two hundred year anniversary. And that is something that has come out of the tourism board, it started in here, with the idea started in here. As to where we're gonna go with it, is we wanna try and get as many organizations, school districts, and clubs involved in it to, to get this thing going, you know, and, and, uh, so, we had our first meeting, and Scott was there at the first meeting, and then the second meeting is gonna be now. But I think it could be an unbelievable thing for Trinidad, an event that's probably only gonna happen one time, but we can really capitalize on this, because this thing is running from Missouri all the way to Santa Fe. At different times of the two, the, oh, twenty twenty-one year, so it starts in Missouri, and when does it end, in Santa Fe, in November?
End of November.
In, in the end of November, it ends in Santa Fe.
In November. Alright.
So.
I did, I saw you, yeah.
So are.
Will you text me when you guys are done?
Yeah.
I'll come back?
Yeah, I'll text you.
Sorry, I'm, I'm double booked.
Yeah, you're double booked, we'll text you.
Um. Anything you say can, we'll use, use the mission.
This is.
Remember that.
So, so that's, that's the thing, is, 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 that's our big thing going now, is, is the Santa Fe Trail, is, is.
And, and, and what, what might be one of the coolest things about it, I don't know how we can add, add to it that it would be different, cause I wasn't able to go, is that we're the only place in that whole thing that had a toll road, so we had a toll road coming through here.
Which was, which was, uh, Ratto Pass, and we own the toll, the toll road.
Mm-hmm. There might be something catchy that we could do.
So, so that's, that's the thing, is it, it, it has the, we have an ability to make that a huge event.
And you said twenty twenty-one, or is that this summer?
Twenty twenty.
Okay, coming up next.
September, fine, that's great, okay.
September twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, okay.
Well, and, and both of you should know that we fund the welcome center.
Oh, yeah, so we have.
So, yeah, you know, the city, you know, the city maintenance, right?
Mm-hmm. Clear on that.
So, let, yeah, let's take that down, the summer I saw that we have three hundred and twenty-five or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, let's just decide, let's just know that over a hundred thousand of that goes to the welcome center, so.
That's gone.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that, I'm like, what's the, what's the money left and right?
Yeah.
Um, uh, and so our breakdown, um.
So, do you have any questions on the board's committee commissions, we'll just take each one, as, as Marty has it set up for us here? Have you guys had any questions on, on, on that?
Just a few things, as I was going through, uh, reading like the lodging tax.
Uh-huh.
To be sure, the three percent, is that also off Airbnb's, VRBOs?
It is, we've had, it's supposed to be on everything, we're working through the city of that, because they have not been collecting.
Airbnbs.
Okay. Okay.
And so we're working through that process right now.
Okay, and that would include the state parks even, uh, like a national park?
In city limits.
Okay.
It's just, yeah.
Okay.
So, so that's the, that's a bit.
So, that's the, that's a little bit of a.
But there are some like Airbnb's online that actually take money in, but we haven't seen it turn into the city, so we're working on that,
Mm-hmm.
some of the local owners, it shows that when they charge somebody, it actually takes it, but we're not getting those checks, you know?
They're not coming in.
Like a VBO or Airbnb, which are.
Right, so Joey found out, he, uh, sat here where, where Scott's at, he found out what we're not getting. They're collecting the tax, the company that they book through.
Sure. Okay.
But we don't know if we're getting the sales tax from, from.
We're not to sales, we're not, we're not.
And is that a, a fault of Airbnb, or of the owner of the property?
It's, it would be the city.
It was, the city needs to reach out to Airbnb with this, with a nasty letter saying, you have collected this, it's against a lot of collect tax, and I'm turning it over to the tax authority.
The city.
It'd be the city.
Okay.
Right.
And is that something that's getting wor- is it worked on, is it getting solved, is it?
As far as, no, there may be, well, I'll check on that again, it's been a big fight for us, as of the way this situation works.
Okay.
Can you find out anything, Marty, just a little bit more?
The last conversation that we had when we sat down with the city attorney is kinda, I think, where it, it stopped.
Yeah.
I think anybody's taken it in further than that.
Okay.
It would open up the city to having to follow up with other codes that they would have to follow.
Okay.
Fire codes that they would have to follow, and, um, ADA codes and stuff like that, so.
So, is.
Cause a lot of these Airbnb's are in residential areas.
So, the city's not reaching out and, and hitting it hard, because they don't have a code for ADA's and VBOs, and it's not just the city of Trinidad, although it's frustrating, uh, it's happening nationwide, but small towns and large towns included, you can imagine what Chicago has for Airbnb code.
And you're gonna, we've been, we've been reading about this in the paper, I mean, Pebble's doing it, Spring's doing it, they're re- everybody's reaching out, and wait a minute, where's this money going?
So, we're, we're. And.
So they're all doing it right now.
People are trying to figure out how to handle that, so let's give you an example, you have a room in your house that you've wanted to rent, and you are renting it, and Airbnb is taking the three percent money, and it is being held, because who knows where it's supposed to be, although I think this is gonna be like a national fight over these Airbnb's.
Maybe.
Right, because it's been so bad that they have all this billions of dollars probably with the tech.
And they're popping everywhere.
Right, and, and then all of a sudden, the city comes to you and says, no, 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 you have not had your inspection, you have not got a license, you do not have a fire extinguisher under your seat, you do not have, and so people are trying to figure out what those were, and by the way, did you ask your neighbors that you can have people staying in your home? So there's all, it's huger for the city and for all cities, not only ours, to come up, but it's, it's being worked on, it's just not as fast as we would like, cause we want our money, and think about that, guys, think about it, all of a sudden, there's a check with Airbnb that's waiting for us as soon as we work through this, and all of a sudden, we have a bunch of money extra, we couldn't help you guys.
But everybody is hap- in the same situation, everybody is, so.
Okay. Now, is, just as, um, again, bigger picture perspective, the hospitality establishments that are within the city of Trinidad,
Uh-huh.
do we have a listing of all of those, and we know that those are paying?
Yes.
And.
The ones that are all reputable, yes, Cheryl Navarette collects those taxes, they're collected every three months. The last, uh, so in December, they had to pay by, through January fifteenth, January thirtieth, I was gonna stop it, uh, Cheryl didn't find out what that number was, but.
Is she the controller?
She is the CFO, she's the city, uh, city financial officer, yes.
She's.
For the city.
Okay, she's a comp controller for the tourism.
But they, but she does have a list for every, within the city.
Just curious, and you may not know that, or, or whatever, does the city collect that, or do they use the state to collect that for them?
It's all Trinidad.
Cause I, cause I guess I saw that they have that expression.
We, we, it's a. No, we write the track directly to the city of Trinidad, for Trinidad, right, direct.
Or you, you just go to the state and then back.
Because it was initiative, it gets written directly to the city of Trinidad.
Hold on a minute, now you just said something that throws another question out there, when you say that, are you talking about La Quinta?
Yeah, so the La Quinta.
Is that outside of the city limits, right?
It's, it's annexed, that area is annexed.
No. The, the, the end of the quality, yeah, no, that would be horrible for the city, because sixty percent of the, all the income for the city of Trinidad happens at that street corner, you know, when you talk about Walmart and all those places, anyway, no, at the end of.
Okay, somebody gave me bad information, so I'm happy to have that.
At the end of the, um, the old. At the end of the, um, the Old Holiday Inn, which is the Quality Inn now, right there is city. And then across the street, uh, they annexed in the gas station not too long ago, maybe five years ago.
It's been longer than that.
It hasn't been added from that.
Now, see, tequilas, no, 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 the tequilas is not annexed, neither is the, the budget.
Holiday Inn, yes.
How can, anytime you tie into city utilities, which would be all services, it'd be a power, power ser- power sewer and water.
Except for the peace hotel.
Yeah.
If you don't have sewer, then you don't have to be annexed into the city, if you have septic. But, so whenever you, whenever you get ann- whenever you get annexed into the city, then you are, you can have all city services.
Alright, so now I get it, this place has the infrastructure services. And, and so like Tower sixty-four is annexed?
It's annexed, it's annexed.
It's in the county, it's just in the city, and it has city services.
And see, it has city services, and it should be, because they tied into the sewer line, they tied that sewer line down.
Should be, but there, but there's not, it is not.
It should be, it should be. It should be, but it's not.
Roadway is not, Tower sixty-four is not.
And it should be though.
But the Holiday Inn is. Holiday Inn is.
Now then, when we all agree that Tower sixty-four should be, then comes the question of where's the obstacle?
That's them, that's them too.
They don't wanna be. It's their option.
When, when they were offered the sewer, not the water and the gas, not the water, but when they were offered to hook into the sewer line, they should have been annexed at that time. That's when they should have been annexed.
So now they have the water in the sewer, but they're not annexed?
Like when I bought a piece of property from the city, when I bought a piece of property from, uh, from a development, I had water and gas and power, I didn't have the sewer. So it ran right in front of my house. So if I annexed my sewer, I would annex into the city. Then I had to pay the city tax, now I get my, my tax bill at the end of the year, so much goes with the city, county, and state. So I, I was annexed. Three houses down, uh, Ray Duran's not annexed into the city. He has a septic.
Okay.
So then he doesn't have to pay.
Well, as we go back to discuss the Tower sixty-four property, if they have the water in the sewer, and they should have been, I clearly see his interest to not be annexed into it.
Cause he advertises that you don't have to pay taxes, those rates are less.
Yeah, and so then, again, I asked the question, where's the obstacle?
That's where the city dropped the ball, so.
So the obstacles in the city.
So when they were, when they were offered that, they, that's, that's, that's the, that's the one thing about when you, when you annex-
It has everything to do with the city, it has nothing to do with us, and we just can't find-
Oh, no, I clearly, I clearly get that.
Okay, I don't know.
I knew it was not this agency, it was another one, and I was afraid that I got, the answer that I got was the one that I didn't want, and that's the case. Somebody dropped the ball with the city, and, and quite honestly, I'm afraid-
If you'd like me to find out more, but more than I can, that way I can give you some things, real correct information.
Oh, absolutely, no, cause then, one, there's a, there's a new owner there, and two is, the city renews their business operating license every year. So there's incentive to say hello.
But that's the procedure of, of being, of being annexed into the city.
Right, okay, okay, yes, and, and, so as we look down in that southern exit eleven corridor, for my benefit here on the west side, they all are annexed. And then on the-
Well, no, on the east side, they're all annexed, of Santa Fe Trail, but not on the west side.
No.
No, I'm talking about the expressway.
We're talking on the-
He's talking about like you.
The west side of the expressway.
Oh, yes, oh, I was thinking, I was thinking, oh, yes, we're all annexed, yes, we're all, oh.
The whole road that's there, they're all annexed, yeah, wonderful. Because I'll tell you, they, there was, there's, then some comments and questions already presented to me about this point.
Yeah.
Everything from why are we providing police services, but, you know, they're not annexed.
Now, see, now, the Holiday Inn is, is annexed into the city, and they're paying the sales tax.
Yeah.
So then coming over on the east side of I twenty-five, Tower sixty-four is not, Holiday Inn is, the gas station is, but the roadway is not.
No, because it's, 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 it's not, and they're, but they're not tied in.
Yeah, but they're not tied into the city.
City utilities.
Now, I think I remember a conversation with Dean Duran about the electric. The electric down there is San Isabel, it's not city electric.
That's correct, right, that's correct, but somehow it doesn't, like, I, I think-
It's more the water, the sewer than it is the electric.
Yeah, see, it's, it is more the water than the sewer.
Alrighty, okay, and, and again, that just helps me to be educated when I'm talking to people down there.
Yeah, no. And, and so that's the reason why, I mean, we could say that a good portion of all the city, uh, tax dollars comes from that street corner.
Mm-hmm.
So it's important to get all those businesses pledged to sending people downtown Trinidad. You know, it doesn't matter if it's Walmart, and if there's something, have you been to Wal- in a Walmart, leaving Walmart that says, you know, thanks for your trip in Trinidad? Or it's important to get all those hotels excited and sending people downtown, cause that's how we, because we get so much money off that street corner. I don't know how much it is, but I think it's like thirty-niney dollars or something.
Well, and then what's an interesting point, I, I know we had a little bit of a conversation in here about moving, um, and that was during my application process, is what I'm referring to. But also, um, over the weekend, I think maybe it was Friday or Saturday, somebody else came to see me and was talking about the proposed, uh, motor vehicle entrance into Fisher's Peak being exit eight. So if that's the case, and those vehicles, let's say they're leaping the park, and they get on, back on I twenty-five at exit eight, we've lost them.
Well, I don't know who told you that, I don't know if that determination has been completely ready yet, because I know exit eight is one of the areas, and I'm speaking totally out of turn, because I don't know, but I know that exit eleven is another one. And where the governor came and did the christening was off exit eleven by about a mile. So you come off exit eleven, and you turn back on the side road, and you go to about a mile, and on the left-hand side. To me, that seems more like if I was in the group deciding, it would be more logical, and the number one reason why is because there's already the ten million dollar project on the hand to redo exit eleven, so it handles the traffic. So from just somebody who's been in there knowing all the stuff that's going on, it would seem more, much more logical to me to get off at exit eleven, turn down and get there, because we already have this new overpass to Trinidad, uh, over the highway. Versus going to exit eight, which would need, need dramatic improvements.
Dramatic, so that's-
Well, and what, what I would like to add to that is, first off, the individual came to see me, was expressing a concern, didn't have the details.
Right.
But he, his comments were, if we lose the traffic at exit eight, being that they get on as I described.
Right.
The point being is, the side road from exit eight to exit eleven, the access road, needs to be totally altered.
Yeah.
We, as a collective, with this agency and the city, perhaps should fight for that, if, if that's not in the works.
It's more logical to exit eleven, because they're redoing that whole, that whole area.
And that frontage road on, on the east side ends, uh, I think it's, uh, two and a half miles in.
Mm-hmm.
It ends, it deadheads.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the one that's going in front of the budget, and then that, 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 that road ends.
I think that would be, and then they would have to redo all exit eight, I mean, that has, with the amount of traffic they're gonna get, they would have to completely redo exit eight, and they're already doing exit eleven, so.
And, and you have a good point on the access road, but that access road off of eleven, where the governor did his thing, does not go all the way to eight, because there's mountains in the way.
I believe if you go down there now, there's a tree and a couple concrete barriers, right just short of exit eight. That would be an afternoon, and we could have that cleared.
Oh, well, that's good to know.
So maybe on your boardover or something like that, you need to get away, take a ride down, all the way down there.
I, I'll say that, okay.
It, it did end.
That is highway, that is the state highway.
It did end.
There's no question, and the thing is, is we would have to campaign for that from this agency, okay.
Well, one thing I can say, Scott, is I really can say that, the governor, the former governor, Hickenlooper, are without a doubt in love with understanding Southern Colorado and Trinidad. We would not have the space to create project and many other things in Trinidad if Governor Hickenlooper wasn't on our backside. And Governor Paulus is just the same way, he's trying to find money to do it the right way for Trinidad, we've been so lucky here, truly.
Okay.
Is there anything else on that?
Any other questions?
I'm sorry?
Is there any other questions on this?
We've got the, wait, I've always got, do we have, I'm an old person, do we have a certain marketing entity that does anything for us?
Not, not at this time, I, I'm true to that, I pretty much understand that.
We use a few right now, so marketing, so there, there have been times that this board has, um, hired marketing entities. The most popular one that was considered was Hess Arts. The problem that that happened then is that we only had at that time about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to market Trinidad, aside from our trolley duties and everything else, and then we paid them a salary of eighty thousand. And so we didn't get very much bang for our buck, even though they were nice people. So what we do is, we have numerous marketing entities that we kind of do things with right now. We do things with the Chronicle News, we do things with K R D O, we do different marketing entities that give us a package. We don't just do one, we do a lot more work on the board, so that we don't have to pay any one person just to tell us what to do, because it's costs so much.
Here, this, here we get into this, and this, this came out of our, what we had as a craft one-on-one.
And Tommy's so good about this.
And we had a gentleman working for us, his name was Andrew. And he basically laid out a plan for us as to, this is where we should do our marketing.
Okay, what shall we do?
This is the way we should look at it, and Marty's gonna get a copy of this for you, and it'll be on your packet on Wednesday.
Okay. Okay.
Okay? But that gives us, uh, uh, he advises not to have all of our eggs in one basket.
Sure.
To use all of these, these ways and entities to, to advertise, to dis-.
And we pick our magazines well, I mean, we don't, we're not in, we, we have our keynote magazines that we advertise in, and, uh, and we pick them well nowadays.
And there's a sideline with, with that, is that, that wasn't done arbitrarily by Andrew. It was a program in Trinidad called Craft One-on-One, which worked with the Colorado Tourism Office. And he worked with them with a grant program to say, what is the most sound thing, based on what this board has in this location, where they should be spending their money, with top officials. So it wasn't that somebody worked here and looked something up online, this was a program that he worked on with the CTO office for like four months.
And it's, and it, and it gives a, a, a good, I, what I believe is a good layout is.
And it's a great tool, if somebody asks you why you're spending your money there, is that you know, we don't have as much as that we can possibly know. We go to people who have a lot more knowledge and skill and talent.
Knowledge.
And that's what this is.
From, from the point of the tourism board, when we're spending dollars for advertising, that seems, and that category seems very clear to me. When you're spending dollars in marketing, it seems like that opens up the gateway where we can have more discretion to where we-
Well, see, like right now, we, we're, we're advertising in some magazines, how many magazines, Marty, probably about eight magazines we're advertising in?
No, not that many.
Not that many.
We did at one time, because we got away from USA Today, right? Which they had about three or four different types of issues that we advertised in, right?
Right.
So we, so we, instead of us giving them nineteen thousand dollars or twenty-some thousand dollars, we kinda started going out and looking for other venues. We did do some billboards, we discontinued some billboards, because they had no lighting.
We have only one light.
So we only have one, and that's the one between exit eleven and exit thirteen.
Okay.
So we have that one. So in the last two years, we've kind of been venturing out and kind of finding our own way, our own path to advertising. And Marty will go research some things, and then come back and tell us, this is the way to go, or is, if this is the way you wanna do it, or, or, or like that. And then she'll, and then another thing that we did is, we changed the way we did advertising. Uh, a couple of the issues of the magazines that we were advertising in, they had pictures of the Twin Peaks. So we wanna advertise for Trinidad, so we started changing that. And Marty probably has some issues of some of those magazines that-
Well, actually, you have an ad that's coming up in True West Magazine, that's due pretty quick, and there's no decision-making in this session.
No.
But I did bring this for you to review, so this is the ad that I've put together for the upcoming issue of True West Magazine.
And is this the issue we're gonna be saluting?
For April.
For April, okay.
So if you wanted to take a look at that, and then on Wednesday, if you wanted to, you know, you can decide whether or not-
I'm unclear, where was, there's a, uh, upcoming decision for that?
Right.
Yes.
Or just for the ad?
Just for the ad.
It is already been-
To make a commitment of whether or not we do the ad.
Right, we've already advertised in this magazine with the other ones.
Yeah.
But what, what I was saying is, we wanna advertise Trinidad, and this is the, the newer way that we have taken it is, we're, we're doing a contest right now.
What magazine is this?
True West.
True West, so we advertise in True West, so that's the one.
So the board voted to advertise in True West Magazine three times in twenty twenty. Um, and the next one is the April issue, and so this is the ad that, that will be.
For your perusal, or to change, that's why we've got to.
So, so, so True West is the number one magazine in the United States that's looked for for people who want to go to true western towns. So, and Marty put this right on, it's really great, we were voted by True West Magazine in two thousand eight, in two thousand seventeen, and two thousand eighteen, one of the top ten western towns to go to, but what's even more exciting is they announced it in April issue, that they put out, which is the town to watch, and Trinidad's that town.
Trinidad's that town, so we advertise.
So that's a huge, that's interesting.
And Tommy was saying we have a contest going, I'll let him tell you about, for pictures.
We, we don't have a, a good portfolio of, of pictures of Trinidad, so we have a contest going now, I don't know, how's it going, Marty?
Would they have, we have till the end of February for submissions.
Have you, have you had anybody come and ask?
I have two right now.
Two?
I have, I've had many applications go out, I've only had two submissions so far, that have come back.
And so by doing this contest, we wanna kind of build a portfolio of, of places in Trinidad, buildings, historical sites, things that are fun to come and do in Trinidad, and that's, that's why we're running that. If that doesn't do good, then we're probably gonna have to hire a photographer to, to take some of these shots for us.
And one of the reasons is because of our little guide that we did a couple of years ago.
And, and we've done it before, this is how we run this.
You know, and this is, and we have done a contest before, and it worked out real well. But we do have our little brochure book that we put out, that we haven't had one of those in years, and we wanna refresh it up.
Downtown. Okay.
So we're gonna-
Have you seen the visitor guide?
Have you seen the visitor's guide?
I think they've got it in my rest-
You gotta, you gotta show it to me before you ask it, right?
We, we wanna redo that, we wanna redo that, the, with new pictures, and that's why we have the-
So we wanna do new stories, new pictures.
New stories, new pictures.
In this, in this new thing. It, it costs about twenty or twenty-five dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars just to do it.
Sure.
So.
And then when the photographers, uh, submit, we, it's part of the bylaws where regulations that we get to use.
Right, because of the property of us.
But I think this year, we had decided we will put their name in the book, and last year, we said no.
Yeah, okay.
We will not put their name in the book, and I think this year, we did say we would let them put their, put their name, who did, who was the photographer, right?
That's a great idea, that's a great idea, it's worth mentioning about-
But this is the book.
To allow them to do that, right, but we, but we agree with that, yeah.
If we, yeah.
Yeah.
If we didn't wanna pay a photographer, uh, what if there, is there a photography program in the college, is there something in the high school that we could work with?
There was, but I don't think the, the, the photography department in the college is as strong as it was in the past.
We can do a pro, a, a project for him, if we can, if we could coordinate it.
And the high school, we'd love to.
Dave, Dave, Dave Brack, I don't know if anybody knows him, he's, he is the one that's been in charge of the photography in the, at, at the college.
That's a great idea.
They may be able to reach out to the Mitchell Museum, because if it's southwest or old western towns, and it's photography from there, I bet somebody at the Mitchell Museum might have that information.
But I don't, we don't really want southwest with old pictures, we want current pictures.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, we want current, we want, uh-
I thought you want like pictures of older buildings and-
We want what they're gonna do currently.
We have a good vibe.
Yeah, we want, we want, somebody canoeing, we want somebody walking down to your shopping lights.
Okay, got it.
Paint, lights, doors.
Fishing, right.
We put the Blues Fest, we put Art O'Kane in there, we want, you know, different stuff like that, we want current that they could go to, yeah.
Okay, things to do. Okay.
We want a picture of the museums, but we don't want older pictures, because that's not gonna tell them anything about our town.
Now, might be, they want to come and see.
We want somebody fishing in the river, we want somebody going boating down the river, canoeing.
It, it might be a little out of turn, but I, I, I certainly won't throw out, this is a, are we doing anything for like a Google Ads?
Yes.
We're working on that, yes.
Google Ads, we, we, we are, we, we have had our Facebook page redone, and the Chronicle News is taking care of that, at, right now. And adding and updating.
And Joey was real good at Googling, so he might sort it out.
And we have a website that is managed by, by Instagram, they sell all that stuff.
I was excited.[1792.02]
And we have a website that is managed by, uh, Instagram, they sell all that stuff. We have a website that is managed by, um, somebody that also works at, through the college on their website, and they update our website all the time. Marty checks it all the time, Marty's been really great, you know, doing.
But we have an ad campaign with Google for, you know, where we pay per click?
No.
No, we're working on that, that's what Joey was working on.
All right.
Joey's no longer here.
I'm in his seat, it's a big seat, Phil.
Yeah. But Amanda said she knows how to Google real good, didn't you?
I did.
Yeah, so we're working on that.
And actually, we might need a little assistance there, I hear, I hear that, um, some of our streets in Trinidad haven't been updated on Google.
Yeah.
And, uh, anyway, um.
I've got a great Google contact specifically for those Google Ads.
Cool.
And we could have a Google My Business, which is a completely separate thing at Google that could provide us some help.
Bring it to the board, let's look at it.
Okay, just give it to Marty, and Marty will put it on the agenda.
All righty.
Anything else on that, or the question?
Questions, just as far as dates and everything, to make sure we have decisions made, are those all pretty much kept the same as they were when the bill was made? That, that's probably not as, as important, but just to, just to know that, uh, just that last one, that there are big, you know, important decisions that have to be made before April first, before September fifteen, um.
We have one meeting a month for our, uh, uh, regular meeting, and we talk about these, and then the next meeting is our work session. Our voting, no, no, work session is not voting, our regular meeting is voting session. So we have a work session, and we talk about everything, who we're gonna get, supply the money to, or what do we wanna do, and then we go into the regular session, two weeks later, we have the voting session, and that's when we vote.
So, in reference to what Amanda is saying, is this was only true in two thousand two?
Okay.
Because the board, it got passed in September and started in January of two thousand two. Now we do it in September. I'm just looking through it. So all boards and commissions and everything else do theirs before the end of the year, this was just for that one year.
Okay.
Yeah, so now we'll be changing.
Oh, here it does, here it says, um, are the funds set in fourth, and then afterwards, on or before September fifteenth.
Okay, okay, I just kinda wanted to get the timeline in my head of very good when important things are, okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no. So this packet that says Tourism Board on it, that has the city logo on it, the last page is, there's a signature line. If you and Scott will, um, sign that, so I can get this back to.
I, I don't think I ever did, you want me to sign one?
If you haven't, then yes.
Now, um, and just to be clear Marty, it's that last page is all you need?
Uh, in this packet.
Or you need the whole packet?
Um.
Which is, because I've got electronic copies, so I'm good, I just wanted to.
It's the last page, it's all you need?
I think so, I think all I know is the last page. You know what, give me back the whole packet, and if I, if I can give it back to you, I'll go.
All right, that's fine. What's today?
Ten. Ten, twenty.
Thank you.
All right, well, I wrote on my copy, is that okay?
You'll probably get back, I'm just.
Here, I have another one.
Yeah.
Um, other things that are here say that you might wanna know, the City of Trinidad Tourism Board has funded, um, the, uh, trolley for, uh, probably at least seventeen years. The last trolley that was purchased, the City of Trinidad saved up about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to put down on the trolley. Uh, the trolley itself costs a lot more than that, with the, um, C I, was it C I P money or marijuana money? The, the City of Trinidad paid off the truck, trolley, so we only paid for half of the current trolley, and then the city paid it off.
I can't be sure, so I'm not gonna say.
Yeah, it's one of the two, but the city did pay it off.
With, I think it was the marijuana money, they paid off our trolley.
Yeah. And so we no longer have a trolley payment, which at one point, when we had the old trolley, we had a thousand dollar one.
But we pay the storage.
We pay, plus we pay the storage.
And our drivers.
We pay for the drivers, we pay for any upheaval, we pay for any problems, we pay for any flat fighters.
Anything that's involved.
Does that get included in the Welcome Center at all?
No.
No, that's totally different.
So there's three different buckets, there's the Tourism Board bucket, there's the Welcome Center bucket, and there's the trolley bucket. So each of those are in this fund packet, and how they're broken down.
The next one is with the lodging tax, do you guys have any questions on the lodging tax?
I don't believe so.
There's only one question I, that I wanted to add, that was on the organization and the meetings. That's on this, is how we should conduct the meeting. I think like, we have tried it in the past a couple times, that when someone comes up, uh, each one of us will, will be given some time to either ask questions or, or when we go to vote on it, we can talk about it, and then that way nobody's walking on it, everybody, everybody has a.
Yeah, that's a good point to say.
Everybody has a, a few minutes to, to ask a question or, or that. Another thing on that, on that one is, Marty, we've, we've let people talk, go past fifteen minutes, sometimes forty-five minutes talking.
I have a timer now.
Okay, so, Marty?
You were good, huh, man, that interview.
Yeah, I know, I probably made it pretty close to the forty-five.
When, when, when they come to salus, they should be able, and I, I think five minutes is too short for some things, I think maybe we should go seven or eight minutes. On, on.
Ten, yeah.
On seven, eight minutes, that, it, it, that should give them enough time to salus, but they're gonna salus.
Yeah.
If they need more time, then the chair can, uh, say, well, if you have some more to add to it, you can add to it, don't you think?
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
That's when somebody approaches, uh, presents to us or something like that, okay.
Right. Right, yeah, yeah.
When the organization of the meeting are, i- is pretty similar to like city council.
Right, right.
It's, it's the, the, every person gets their time to talk.
Right.
People can come up and ask questions, but we have separate time for that.
Right, right.
It's, uh.
So I think it's, I think it's best if we just, that way we get, get our stuff and get out. What do you think, Marty?
It's your decision, you're driving this train.
That's, that's a bit.
Marty.
We want you on board.
Did you put the brakes, Marty? I will apply the brakes.
So I, but I do think, um, most people, they pretty much have their selves together, in seven, eight minutes they could sal us, like, like, if they need more time, we'll give, we'll allow them more time.
And Marty might just remember that for some new people that might be coming in, just saying, can you get this done in seven or eight minutes, or I'll ask the board what takes you to.
There you go.
Okay.
So K R D O and some of those contracts might.
Yes, so they know before they have to stand up and.
Yeah.
Record their heart out.
You're done, that's it, you're done.
Is there a format, I know when I, uh, was on certain organizations for college, there were formats that you could look to for like courtesy in certain, in meetings, um, I don't know if that makes any sense, if it's, uh, just kind of a regulation sheet or rules of the meeting or something to look to.
Like rubber rules of order or something.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Um, yeah, I think we pretty much, if, anybody should look at that if they need to, the rubber rules of order, we pretty finally closely resemble, uh, its rules of order.
I will give that a look, just to be.
And if they, if they're going to present, uh, tell us what you're gonna say, say what you're gonna say, and then review what you said. It, it'll stay to five to seven minutes if they do it, with that format, if they, otherwise they're superfluous and we're here all week.
We, we, we know they want money, we just want, wanna know if it's gonna be right for us to spend our money there. And they should be able to give us that in seven, eight minutes.
And the only thing else that I wanna say is just, remember, we're a small community here, we're trying to do the best that we can, so this is all, also touchy feely as long as we're following the rules and regulations, that we're trying to grow our, our town, with the small amount of money that you'll see, ends up that we have. The biggest, the biggest problem I sometimes see that, or I've seen, and not only in this board, but a few other boards that I've gone on, see is they find out that you're on the board. So they've come to talk to you, and before you know it, they go out in the community and they say, Amanda says this, and Amanda says that. So probably the best thing, if something's really passionate, you don't know if you have the right facts or not, is please come to the next board meeting. And Marty, Joe Smith wants to come to the next board meeting in the coming months.
Emails, emails, you can, we cannot converse in emails amongst the five of us.
You'll see emails will come through, and it'll say info only, so that you know it, but we can't talk among ourselves, which is not.
Only. We can't talk among ourselves on it, all right?
Cause those are considered, yeah.
Yeah, that is, you could, you could reply to Marty if you have a comment, but don't reply to all, just reply to Marty.
So, as example, Marty just gave us this beautiful picture that she's done for this magazine. If she were to send it all to us, and we say, great, 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 it wouldn't be right for Camilla to start telling all of us on a, on an email what she likes and doesn't like about it, and influence your decision, or influence your decision, or your, that the public doesn't know what our decisions are.
Right.
She has to be public, that's kinda like a work session.
If you see something on there, right, if you see something on there that you would like to see on there, then you can voice that.
Reply to Marty only, don't reply to all.
I do request before putting any agendas together, that, you know, if there's any information or any items, line items that you want on that agenda,
Yeah.
to let me know, and I'll place it on the agenda, and then after I've put the agenda together, I usually review it with Si, she's like the chairwoman, so she'll review it. So whoever is in that position will review the agenda, approve it, and I'll go forward. And literally, Marty knows all the rules and regulations, so I look at it, it's just if there's something really wrong or something that I felt needed to be added. Besides that, Marty's good enough that whenever we're doing it, she's writing down what's gonna happen at her next meeting, she's taking lessons. So we don't have to micromanage Marty, we just let her know.
And how flexible are we with going off agenda if something comes up in conversation in a work session? Is this, the, just out of curiosity, is that something that's very strict?
It happens, it happens.
Yeah.
If it happens, we got in trouble.
Okay. We try not to, but it happens, we're still on. It happens.
And, and, and if that's a, if that's a, if, if that's something that happens, let's say we get really, uh, passionate about one thing and we start talking about another thing, do we have somebody, are you kind of a person that says, hey, you're falling off track a little bit?
Just, just, just read our F's.
I fail sometimes.
And then that could be added to the next agenda, in the next meeting, or just say that really, that's enough, we don't have it, or we can talk about this, it's really not, and go on.
The next agenda, yeah.
Yeah, like, one of the, one of the things is, if, if you see the agenda and you see all those items on there, there's something at the end of the agenda, and if you wanna talk about it, then you can talk about it then, right?
And I'll just remind you that it's on Agenda Item Number Seven or whatever.
Okay, they're off.
Yeah, it, it could be on the agenda, you should know it totally.
And then, and then you can, and then you can, and then you can bring it up then, and talk about it then.
Okay, and is the agenda sent before the meeting, do we get it right, beginning of the meeting?
The, the meetings are always on Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
I generally will send, I'll, I'll finalize the agenda on either Friday or Monday morning, so I can get it posted, it has to be posted twenty-four hours before the meeting.
That's right, yeah.
That's another law, right, and then packets are, are posted on your tablets or sent in an email.
On Google Drive.
Sent in an email, we can, we are working on trying to get new ta, uh, new, new tablets.
If you can't access your packets.
Okay.
Because the ones we have, we gave up on.
So one way or the other, in an email, so check your email regularly.
Okay.
Um, and I also can send you messages on your phones if you'd like to do that, check your email.
Okay.
I sent something, not all of us are, you know, sitting in front of a desk all day long, we have other things to do, so I will send you a text message, say, check your email, you've got an email, it'd be awesome.
Right.
So, yeah, this is, this is just a little bit different about that, you brought up that, that made me think it's a really good idea. If all of a sudden we can't, we don't think we're gonna have a forum, we can't meet Monday at nine o'clock, we can't say we, we'll meet at one because we're running late. It, it's a twenty-four hour meeting posting law, so that has to go back to Marty, we post it twenty-four hours in advance. Any public that wants to show up here at a meeting gets the right to know, the meeting time has changed.
Okay.
Okay.
We kind of went over the ordinance, we don't, we just have any other questions on the ordinance?
And that Boards and Commissions one, Tom, is actually in this packet, so we don't have to go over that one again either.
Okay, that's in that, uh.
In this one, yes. So the tourism fund would probably be the next thing that you need to review?
You didn't have a chance to get it.
I, I've got a chance to have it, because I'm, I'm a little curious, um, just to kinda kick things off, that ten thousand in miscellaneous and down below it says ordinance, uh, twenty ninety-three budget amendment, a- anybody got any details of, where's that coming from, or what that's about?
The, um, revenue, were you at the top part?
Yeah, yes, right, right, right at the top under the two thousand.
Budget? It was a grant, it was a grant that came through the C T O office that we're still, uh, yeah, it was a grant that we received from Colorado Tourism Office that we were working with to do a couple different, um, analytical studies. One analytical study and the other one was a bicycle study, and that money just hasn't been moved up here from there, but was used.
So.
Is that correct, Marty? Yes, the ten thousand dollars was a Colorado Tourism Office grant that was received by the city and the Tourism Board to conduct a visitor profile study.
It's already spent, but it's still there.
Got it.
Okay.
And it was part of the budget, but.
And we're gonna be going over that, where that money was spent.
Okay.
Uh, if that's the bucks then, right?
Yes, yeah, and that's why there's a blank on the twenty twenty budget for that.
Right.
We're hoping we get another grant, we hope they.
And that, um, excuse me, line item on the second page, thirty-four oh two, it says outside contract services, two thousand nineteen, it was seventy-five thousand, and that has the same budget amendment to it, I just wondered, um.
That is twenty nineteen, and that is the same gender.
Yes.
The ten thousand dollars was outside contract services.
Uh, no. Okay, and here I see it at seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, so their budget was set for outside contract services would be things like our maintenance website, overseeing, anything that we have a contract that goes along with, outside contracts that Marty doesn't do.
Okay, so as we look at that line item, what we don't have is the column that says actual for two thousand and nineteen. We have actual for two thousand and eighteen.
We, Cheryl doesn't have it out yet, we'll all get a copy, we, none of us have seen that yet.
Probably not till after April.
Okay, and just so I'm clear, the distinction between budget and projected is, help me with that.
Well, budget was what we did in, in January of last year, projected is now, after we know everything that's happened, what we really spent, but we don't have final figures from Cheryl.
So then, is projected, uh, based on our internal numbers at year end?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and we won't know that until April.
Yeah, that's what we're, based on our numbers.
So, so we budgeted, let's say in late two thousand eighteen, we budgeted seventy-five thousand. Let's say by late two thousand and nineteen, we see that our actual was only thirty-five-five as an assumption, and then when we get the actual numbers, it, you know, it's, to me, it's quite alarming when it's only fifty percent of what we've budgeted, but that's only alarming based on initial, now that I got it.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's, and it's kind of weird, even where the pools of money are coming from, because it was only this last year, after we had already done the budget for two thousand nineteen, that we were gonna be overseeing the Welcome Center, so it offset those figures.
Right.
Cause some of the things Marty ends up taking care of that's set in this budget, that we didn't know we were going to be so involved with Welcome Center and with Marty. So this year's figures kinda got thrown off for that reason.
And then, and then sometimes we'll, we'll take from one entity, one, one area to, to another, we'll borrow money from.
Like, where you have advertise, advertising the publications, budget twenty-five thousand, projected is up to seventy-five thousand, maybe some of that money from.
Right.
Well, and some, some of that is because we did this two years ago, and we were gonna redo it again, and we didn't this year, so we put that money into something else.
We kinda, we kinda wanted.
Oh, yeah, that is a Lenny or Paul kinda thing, right?
This was forty thousand dollars, so we thought we'd carry it through, so the cover you see is a second cover, the year before it had a different cover on it, and we produced more so that we wouldn't have to spend forty thousand dollars to do this and let it go a second year.
Okay.
What, what we were waiting for is Fisher Peak and, uh, this last conference that we had went to in Denver, uh, on, on, on doing the new, the new, of the.
So then part of the rub is, is you submitted the twenty twenty budget presumably by the end of.
September.
By September of when?
Two thousand nineteen.
Of two thousand nineteen.
So we were throwing out about what we think we're gonna do and if you need a budget to move forward via our ordinance by September.
It's kind of a historical flow that it is, because we don't have the actual numbers from two thousand nineteen, okay.
Right, nineteen. So see, we just did a projection off of two thousand nineteen.
None of that, for me, is alarming, is just to cover that, to save my assumptions.
Yeah, no.
The, the, the biggest reason for us not getting our stuff until April is because the way the sales tax is paid.
I see.
And then, in April, we'll have a full vision of how it all balanced out from two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
Just because we don't get the full picture of the, of the sales tax.
Okay.
Until April.
And Cheryl did stand up in front of city council and said, we did have our act together. Did, she did, she said, we are very.
Yes.
She said we're pretty conservative.
We're pretty conservative.
Well, she definitely followed the rules and regulations. Cheryl said she, I mean, really, she said like, you know, everything except for she's proud of our board, because we follow the rules and regulations. In all fairness to Cheryl, not only has she had all this, she's had a whole new system down there this year and everything by herself. She's a one woman office that takes care of the whole city of Trinidad, over fifty-five million dollars worth of stuff, and she just does a fabulous job, so as this is getting put out, I, I, it'll be easier to read. But I'm glad you're asking those questions, because it reminds me of what advertising on publications, that number was because of this.
Okay.
And this is maybe an obvious question, but I'll ask it anyway.
Yeah, no, great.
Um, if we make the budget in September, w- we're clearly not going to have all of the, the fuck, the figures or the numbers that we're making for the whole year. Or I guess my question is, the budget that we're making is based off of all of last year's money?
And what we wanted to.
To assumption, of what we would like to see done.
Okay.
So, so, so like, one of the things is, is we set twenty thousand dollars aside for new events.
Okay.
And then we have, uh, what's the, the number for the events that we actually, uh, fund? Where's that at?
Oh, I'm sorry, pardon me.
Um, how much is that for?
For grants, it's eighty-nine oh one, it's local festival funding.
For grants.
Oh, okay.
So see, there's, there's those two, and, and those, we just added that twenty thousand, was it in two thousand nineteen that we added that?
The twenty thousand to new events?
Right, it was, it was, it was part of the.
It was, it was in twenty nineteen budget.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so on the bottom one there, you'll see the local events, that one, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Is, is it safe, sorry to interrupt, is it safe to figure you're keeping fifty-five percent of revenue is cash on hand?
Well, yeah, but not really, so the board has been saving that money for seventeen years and uses it for a big expense. So it's not like we took fifty percent of the, of the money from last year and didn't spend it. That's been like, we've saved ten thousand dollars, but like, that's how we bought the trolley.
Yeah.
So is there, in other words, there's always a running balance of about a hundred and eighty thousand?
Yes.
Yes.
It's just started to grow.
In case everything goes boom, we have that money there.
In case everything goes boom, we have one year worth of minimal operating money.
Right.
Do we have a, I'm sorry, Tom, do, I just wanna continue my thought here. Do we have a, in case everything goes boom, contingency plan to justify keeping the?
Well, all our contract services, so everything that we would keep and plan, if everything, the bottom dropped out was, uh, contract services. And it would cost us a minimum of one year with the welcome center, and having a hundred and eighty thousand or whatever in the bank, it would cost us a millionth minimum of one year just to keep going. We, it would be more comfortable to have like three hundred thousand in savings, but we don't.
Not, not that that's, not that that's gonna happen.
I'm, I'm not here to argue, I'm here to imagine, but to gather that.
Yeah.
And, and not that that's gonna happen, but like in two thousand seventeen and two thousand sixteen,
Yeah.
we were actually getting a hundred thousand, so in those two or three years, we.
You see the revenue growth.
The, the, the revenue growth has been around twenty-five thousand. So what we wanna do is, possibly down the road, we want to either, we wanna add another van. So, that's what we were looking at, is adding one that is not as big as the trolley, but something that can be part of that program.
Uh, uh, Tom is so right about that. Let, look, let's look at it, so many times on Friday and Saturday nights, we wanna run service from the hotels downtown, but we get those ten, twelve people that are wanting to come downtown and also drop off a hundred or two hundred dollars, right?
Mm-hmm.
But to take the trolley into that, the expense is so great, getting in and out of the hotels is so hard. So if we had a, a smaller, a smaller, that set of twenty people.
And we have talked to the city about this.
Right. Yeah, one that, one that we have available, like, like.
They're a lot better.
Along those places have a van available. You know, they'll take you, they'll take you to an event, they'll take you downtown, they'll take you, those are.
A shuttle. A shuttle.
So that's, that's, that's what we wanna do, we wanna get to that, right, to where we can buy one.
Especially we don't have, um, Uber or Lyft services anywhere in town, so I, okay.
Right.
We would like to do a van.
So one of the biggest things about that also is, we probably would have to have handicap accessible.
It has to be, cause it's.
It has to be.
So, so that's where the cost is at, so that's why it's gonna take us a while to build to that point, or maybe be a partner with the city in, in some aspect in, in purchasing that. So that's kind of what we're doing, it's kind of a nest egg to, for our future purchase of.
Is there any way to make that like beneficial to the hotels too, if they provided their own shuttle or if they?
Well, it's a, from a hotel perspective, we can't, that, that's a good point, so in bigger cities, hotels do have some shuttles. Um, and, and places like Breckenridge, they go in and out of every hotel.
Right.
Um, a, a shuttle for the hotel would cost probably around eighty-five thousand dollars a year, plus the insurance of picking people up. It's, we just, we can hardly even handle the three dollar an hour increase in wages over the last three years than to buy a hundred thousand dollar shuttle. So, so we, we did work with COD to try to see if we could use their shuttles,
This, this is.
but they fall into whole other different grant programs for theirs, so I, yeah.
To me, this is a benefit for the city, for the restaurant business, for the museum business, and for, uh, uh, retail. That's the way I feel, that, that, that's a benefit of, 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 is for that.
I have better than you guys.
And then you remember, and then you remember, we are supposed to take this money from beds and heads.
Mm-hmm.
Heads and beds, and pull people downtown to spend money, so what better way? That's how we're generating our in- income, is to try to get, pull them down, pull them down.
That's how, you know. So we're servicing back the hotel by.
I have to go guys, but I'm gonna go back to work.
And I know, unless we kept money in reserve, I know any year could we afford to take a hundred thousand dollars and buy a vehicle. And then we have to staff that vehicle, which will end up costing us somewhere between twenty and thirty thousand dollars a year, just to, even on Fridays and Saturdays. So, it gets really difficult when you get down there, but, um.
So and then, the next one is, is, is this the review that we gave to the city council, I'm already concerned.
It is.
The next one ends up, uh, you've probably had a chance to look at that, uh, these are all the things that we had done in two thousand nineteen.
So when somebody tells you that you just got on the board, thank goodness, they'll do something. Look through that list and see what we've done in just twenty-four meetings or whatever.
So that's, that's where, uh, twenty thousand of the new grant fund went and seventy thousand of the, um, actual grant money went. Those are the things that we funded.
I have another naive question, I'm young, this is very new to me. I want to get a better understanding of what the difference is between grants or endorsing grants and the money that we have in the budget, because, because we don't want, we don't give money necessarily to, to somebody to set up a stage, we don't give them the money to, to pay for the, for the bands that come in, but we pay for the advertising for the event. Now, is that, is that a grant that pays for that, or is that us from our, I guess.
Our minds.
From our minds.
Yeah.
That's.
We try to put it in a grant so that we can allocate it all, I don't think there's any other time that we haven't put it in a grant, is that right, Marty? Try to, yeah, okay, and we create the grants, based on.
Well, we put grants out and people fill out grant forms, I'm doing the Angel Festival, I need a thousand dollars for that.
We have a grant.
You all have a grant.
And we slap it in your.
Yeah.
And say, we got angels coming in from all over to. We're gonna advertise about angels in Denver, advertise about angels in Santa Fe.
Okay.
And both of those ads cost five hundred dollars, and we say, good for you to give a thousand dollars.
Okay, so based on the money that we get from the hotels, we are able to give grants.
Right.
Right.
That's what we, okay.
And if hotel occupancy goes down, then we don't have any money to spend.
Right, okay.
Cause we already have some money for welcome center, for trolley, contract services, we're in a contract with the roadside, with website people, with, you know, we have to watch all of our contract money and then spend beyond that or around that.
Okay.
So, Amanda, if you'll look on your tourism fund page.
Mm-hmm.
Under tourism, four eight hundred, the last item says local festival funding.
Yeah, that's Tom.
Okay, we have seventy thousand dollars for that.
Okay.
They take those individuals that are looking for help with their advertising, they take this application, which is in your packet.
Okay.
They fill it out.
Mm-hmm.
And then the board reviews how much they're, you're going to grant them.
Okay.
You know, of, of this one application.
Based on how successful we think it could be, or the venue.
Right. And, and it comes out of that seventy thousand dollars.
Okay.
So that seventy figure also looks big, but if you do that by the four times we did it last year, so hopefully we'll keep that procedure and I have a, we'll do like this next year.
Mm-hmm.
But we had like seventeen thousand dollars and we had thirty-two grants. It gets really difficult at that point.
Sure.
And especially when you know you're gonna go to your restaurant, somebody's gonna say, Amanda, tell me why my fifteen thousand dollars wasn't good. You're like, I have thirty-two, well, but I, I only had seventeen displayed.
And, and, and we wanna fund, we wanna fund all the events, you know.
Yes.
And we did, we did.
That's why they organize the board, because we have to do the work to make this, yeah.
And, and we did come across some, some complications, what was it, two years ago, Marty?
What, with what?
On the grant applications. So, we redid the, the grant application.
Okay.
And then what Marty does is Marty goes over the grant applications and makes sure that everything that they submitted is everything that we need.
Okay.
And then, then we can proceed with giving them the money.
Right.
But she, if there's anything that is missing on the grant form, she gets with them, and that hadn't happened in the past.
Okay.
So I put together a checklist.
Sure.
So that when the, by the time the grant gets to the board for review,
Okay.
it's considered a completed and acceptable grant.
Totally, okay.
Before that, it was just, they'd hand them in and they'd get here and they were missing this, or they were missing that, and it, it just.
Well, that's great, that's not good.
Yeah, so now there's a checklist, they have to follow.
Right, and, and we did, and, so.
It makes it easier for you.
Totally.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is, do we have access to any state grants or anything bigger than what we are in control up here that?
The one state, the one state grant we get is the one that was part of the tourism.
Okay.
And if you look into this other part, there is a, a, a paragraph on us going out for grants, we can't, it has to be approved by the city.
Right, it's, it's, the city to apply for grants, the tourism board can not.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Okay, got it. But we could if we had approval from the city, if we brought a place good enough.
We could bring it to the city.
Exactly, when you do present something to the city,
Yeah.
they'll review it and they say, oh, yeah, that's probably a good idea, you can do that, but we can't just, it's like, oh, there's a good grant.
That's, that's a core area for us, but, okay.
Right.
But if we, I mean, it's kind of like this, we hold ourselves accountable with all the checklists and everything, then we can make something like that happen.
Exactly.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
By and large, as I understand it, our charter or our responsibility is to dole out or spend the city's money that they collect.
It's the city of, you know, it's tourism board's money, it's not the city of Trinidad's money.
More than. Well, yeah.
Okay.
Theoretically, in a game of semantics.
Well, no, because we don't go to the city and say, can we have a hundred thousand dollars this year?
Correct.
We don't do that, our money is kept in the second half.
This money is established just, just by this ordinance.
Exactly, right. And that is, my understanding is, is, is the city collects that money in the form of taxation. We're not in the business of going out and trying to increase funds, other than sub, through the back door, we do, cause heads and beds seems to be the term. So we try to do it that way, we don't campaign or go look for grants to get money.
If, but, if it is, I'm told, I mean, if it was, if it was good enough for tourism, if it was good enough for the good of the city, then why wouldn't?
Well, and then it goes back to line one that I mentioned, the ten thousand dollars, that probably is a perfect example where somebody found out about that and we availed that.
Well, let's re- hurt, re- hear how that happened. So the city of Trinidad's tourism board, there was a project going out with Colorado Tourism Office, which is still going on now, that was called Craft One Oh One, and it is like Colorado rural, something, uh, money, okay? But you have to go through this program, and if you decide as a board, you'll go through the program for the city of Trinidad, then they would offer you a grant for ten thousand dollars. So us collectively, along with other people in the city, went through this program that lasted about four months and received that ten thousand dollars for graduating from Craft One Oh One. Now they have Craft One Oh Two that will.
Two, two.
Two, 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 Two Oh One. So they'll probably ask us, because we're not going through that program yet, if we want to do it. And if so, they earmark a certain amount of money they will give you if you do something that they think would be beneficial for that section of the state of Colorado. And they came up with that they would give us ten thousand dollars if we wanted to earmark a, a, a visitor profile that, based on analytics. And so we approved that, and that cost us twenty-five thousand dollars. The ten thousand dollars came from that grant, and we had to throw in additional fifteen thousand dollars. So there's always, always the stuff going on in the background, so the way the Colorado Tourism Office gives you money is you perform, because they want the whole state of Colorado to be wonderful. And so they're like, okay, well, Southern Colorado hasn't done this, we'll kind of help them, wanna think they wanna do it, because if they get this done, then we'll give them money.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so Colorado dot com is your tourism website?
Mm-hmm.
So in your spare time, if you wanna brush up on a little bit of that kind of stuff.
Great.
Go to Colorado dot com, and there are, um, there's pages and pages of possible or available grants that, you know, might interest the tourism board, it is a tourism website. And so if you wanna research that, take a look at it and say, hey, well, maybe we could do something like this. We could take it to city council and say, you know, can we research this, or let me know about it, and we'll do a little research on it. There's destination development grants, um, there's tourism, a variety of tourism grants that are available.
Okay.
So I try to stay on top of that, Si does the same thing.
Tom is so proficient in it, I really have to thank him and Marty, they were the ones that worked together to put the program together today so that you guys would be better, well-versed to start your position, for sure.
Yeah, we never had this before. So I thought it would be a good idea to kind of give you a little bit of heads up.
Well, that, that absolutely helps, again, from that perspective point. Now my question goes to, prior to these elections, what were you all working on that, and, and maybe it's in that computer and I just haven't seen it yet. So, you know, where's the train going down the tracks, what do we need to get up to speed on?
So we're ready for Wednesday, okay.
Yeah.
Just, just the board packet, which she sends you the board packet, it's, it's gonna give you an example of the things that were, now is that a board meeting or a work session?
It's a regular week meeting.
It's a regular meeting, so we're gonna vote on some things on this next meeting.
Okay.
So then you'll be able to look, the, one of them is that advertising there,
Sure.
that, in this magazine that we're going to, and I don't know what else is on the agenda. But then we make some decisions on the, on the, on that agenda, and if you have any questions, you can get with Marty as to what she put on the agenda, and if you need some kind of, uh, upreggers to what it's about, she'll, she'll fill you in on, on what it's about.
Okay.
You'll have, you'll have your board packets by noon tomorrow.
Okay, so that, and that's a full, well, it's tomorrow, Tuesday, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, the, the one deal that we did with the tourism that Craft One Oh One, it was about how to market your city. The different things that they use to, along with the country, even other countries, you can't, how, how you market.
Please. It hasn't been adjourned officially yet.
Okay, okay. We can do it now.
And really, we're, just ask us, um, where, where we, everybody that has ever been on this board has been passionate about trying to make Trinidad better. Um, when you think of it, this tourism tax money has been somewhere between a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to two hundred and sixty-five, three hundred thousand dollars every year for the last eighteen years. So it has brought in, you know, five, six million dollars into the city of Trinidad over the years. But the board has had a lot of contract responsibilities that it also has taken care of and we're just wanting to always move forward.
Sure.
So before you adjourn, I just wanted to bring to your attention this Colorado Most Endangered Places booklet put out by Colorado Preservation Inc. If you'll look for the heading in green, it says saved on it. It says Alcorazone, the Trinidad Distinctive Commercial District. We were on an endangered list. This, we were just announced that we are, we have been saved. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Who saved this, Marty?
Um, I don't know all the background on it or even why I'm on that list.
Who got saved Trinidad or, uh?
Well, I, I think that they look at the district, just to the amount of buildings that have been renovated and projects that are going on. And then it becomes.
And that building's awesome.
Yeah. So I think that's how they decided, so, you know, we have had a lot of people stepping up and taking care of the buildings, including the Space to Create Project and private, private.
If you could have them get a tour to this one.
Yeah.
And how they re- 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 animated.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And, and Mount Carmel and the Perpetu Building and the Chronicle News Building and just so many, and the Space to Create Project, the whole block, I mean, my goodness, you know? It's a beautiful thing.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Just one more thing on this. The reason I brought it, brought this is our deadline is February the fourteenth, so it will be on the agenda on Wednesday for approval. So if you have any revisions to this that I need to make between now and Wednesday, let me know, that way I can get it done and get it out to them.
I'm gonna look at some of those pictures that I got on that thing. There was a real cool one there of Bat Master.
This actually was a poster that the tourism board done.
Oh, okay.
Worked in conjunction with, uh, honi school students.
Oh, okay.
And I printed up a ton of these.
I actually have some. I was selling in a gift shop here in school, bring some, so we.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty neat. I just took it out of the mops and thought I'd do it again.
And actually, that kinda project is a, is a project that was very low cost. And I would really love to see something like that happen again. So what happened with Steve Wharton as a printer and a marketing and ad guy, I think it was only like fifteen hundred dollars. We helped support honi's, uh, program in a school and they came up with posters and people. And, and what it really did is it really made the kids aware.
Totally.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna adjourn then.
Okay, motion to, motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Right here.
All right.